Good evening. I have 5:30. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is August 23rd. This is a meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. If you would join me for a moment of silent reflection before we get going. Thank you. If you'd rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Zajak.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Item five on our agenda is correspondence. This evening, we have five pieces of correspondence. One from Mesaki County, one from Mackinac County, and three from Lake County. I'm looking for a motion to receive and place on file. So moved.
Support Griffith.
A motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Griffith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six on the agenda is employee recognition. We have with this the second quarter winner of an internal nomination. It's our chief assistant prosecuting attorney, Carolyn Henry. So congratulations, Ms. Henry.
Thank you so much.
This is one of the more enjoyable parts of being the chair. I want to read for my colleagues and for those in the audience, a couple of comments that were presented, you know, along with the recognition and to give you an example of the type of employee that Carolyn Henry is. It says, "As the chief assistant prosecuting attorney, Carolyn is extremely busy and knowledgeable, yet she always keeps her focus on serving those around her and in her community, particularly those who are the victims of crimes. One victim's family was struggling with the various aspects of the criminal system and the stress of the process. Carolyn not only took the time to meet with the family, but went above and beyond in taking the family to the judicial center and showing the young victim what a courtroom looked like in order to try and ease the anxiety and uncertainty he felt. Her empathy, listening, and understanding for this young victim and his family demonstrate such a commitment of helping those who are victims of crime that we are most fortunate in Livingston County to have such a caring, dedicated, and compassionate chief assistant prosecutor." And then another one here. Carolyn will cover anything, arraignments, sentencing, pretrial. She is always willing to do anything to help. She comes in early, stays late. She wants to make sure that the office runs smoothly and efficiently. She knows the law and is always available for questions. She will give advice, but listen to your perspective as well. She and Mr. Reader have established a great working environment. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for all of you guys to do this recognition of the employees. I know I always say, I feel like I'm at the Academy Awards, like, do I have the time? But I've always thought that I'm only as strong as the people that I work with and the team that I work with. I love you. I am so appreciative of Judge Reader giving me this opportunity to work with him and to work with the teams that we have in our office and to serve the community. So thank you all of you for everything that you do day to day. And I am just so happy to serve the community and be a part of this community.
Thank you very much. Item number seven on the agenda is our first call to the public. This is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the Board of Commissioners. Every speaker wishing to address the board will have three minutes. Alls that we ask is that you, before starting, provide us your full name and address for the record, and then I'll start a timer. I will, it'll be set for three minutes. I'll, I'll say 2:45 when you've got 15 seconds left, and then you'll hear a little buzzer, and that means the time is up. So we'll start here in the room, the physical meeting room. Is there anybody that would like to address the board? If you would, please step forward. Would say, go ahead, sir. Make sure you speak into the microphone. Otherwise, the folks on Zoom won't be able to hear you.
Commissioner Nakagiri, thank you. I was just going to say if they could speak right into the microphone. You're welcome to have a seat.
Thank you. My name is Dan McNevich. I live at 3140 Sheehan Road in Pinckney, and I work at a Brighton address. I'm here to ask the commissioners here to reconsider accepting COVID response funds that the Finance Committee rejected recently. And I'll tell you why I think you should do that, but I think the how is important, too. And I'm not familiar with the rules of your body, but I figure during your agenda review, a commissioner could move to put a discussion to potentially send that issue back to the Finance Committee, or maybe it's within your rules, since you guys comprise the Finance Committee yourselves, to do that tonight. Why I think it's important that we get these funds? I mean, I agree with the, what I think is the prevalent sentiment in the health professionals that work for the county, saying that they could use those funds. I think the director was here last time. She said they'd be useful, and you even have staff going to the press and saying, you know, they don't really have that much faith in you guys if you're not going to make the decision, so that make their jobs easier and that would benefit the, the people of the county. I think why some of you might reject those funds is like the trappings of a culture war that is kind of getting in the way of, you know, us helping each other, and that sucks. And we should try to get beyond that so that we could tackle these big issues together. So again, I would ask a commissioner during agenda review to move to have a discussion tonight and potentially send it back to the Finance Committee or deal with it tonight. I think it's a really important issue, and as an anecdote, like, you guys, if, if the sheriff was like, "Yeah, the state of Michigan has $1.5 million to help us fight crime and like, you know, solve this real big thing that we've been working on," would you think twice about giving that money to the county sheriff? I don't think so. Like, you know, it's important for our community to stay healthy, and a healthy community would be having COVID response, you know, efforts throughout the county and like more visible and more easily accessible than we have it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here in the room that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners tonight? Yes. Ask for your full name and address, and once you give us that, I'll start the timer. You'll have three minutes.
I'm Joellen Pizarchik, and I live at 4119 Howell Place. So I did send over some information to everyone last night and then again this morning. And the, I, I understand that this is a difficult decision because, you know, it's money, and, and who can't use money? But I do think that it's important to consider how, where the money's coming from. Again, what strings are attached, but also what our needs are in this county. So rather than just simply taking a pile of money and applying it just because it came from the state with certain earmarks attached, I think, what are our needs? For example, I have study after study that says, first of all, children don't get COVID. They don't have the receptors in their nostrils to actually get it. There's been 335 deaths nationwide since the beginning of the pandemic for children under 17. So why would we think that we need to vaccinate them all? There's just, it just doesn't make any sense. But what are the needs in the county? Suicide, addressing that issue, maybe deaths in nursing homes from other types of infections or in fact COVID infections. Maybe the Health Department needs to be, you know, training and sharing some of their knowledge and expertise in that area. There could be a number of things, and obviously, it's up to them to do the needs assessment and as well as yourselves. But I would say trying to direct any monies that would come in in a more productive and meaningful way would be, would be much more beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the room wishing to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, I'll, I'll move over to Zoom. I already see some raised hands. And if you don't know how to use the Zoom, raise your hand button, just wave at us and we'll call on you. So we'll start with Ms. Nancy Durant. Just give us your address and we'll be all set.
Hi, I'm Nancy Durant. I live at 4616 Spring Mountain Drive, and I live in Brighton. And I'm just going to bring up, I have a study in front of me that, pardon me, I'm in my car. I'm sitting in a parking lot. I'm in a hot car, but I have you on my cellphone. The woman that just spoke in front of me, I don't remember her name, but I am going to require or refer her to the Essential Local Public Health Services Funding Report that is a comparison of counties in the Michigan, and it's a full report that's dated February the 1st, 2019. It does a comparison of all the public health departments in the state of Michigan. Unfortunately, it gives a needs, unfortunately, I will have to say that Midland, or Midland, that we are not even in the middle of Michigan. We are one of the lowest public health departments funded. Inum is 10 times more funded than we are. 25 times more funding goes to Oakland. So when you talk about how we are funded related to just things like getting the COVID, many calls to the Health Department, there were many discussions at this commission about why we're not getting the COVID vaccine out quickly enough to so many of our individuals. We know that Oakland was able to have responses much quicker than we did. When you look at these funding sources, that's one of the reasons why. She talked about, what do we need? Yes, one of the things we need are data. We need data about who's getting COVID, where it is, what's happening in our nursing homes, how's it going to be delivered? We need who, when, where, and how. And I know, I'm sitting here in Ann Arbor, working as a temp. I was approached by the Livingston, but we need more nurses, medical director. We need all of the things that unfortunately, you can say, we're not Oakland County, we're not Livingston County, we're not Washtenaw County, but I would hope that we would be able to provide more services for our county. Please, please look at the vote that you did and please look at what we need for our people. Our people in Oakland, or Livingston deserve what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Judy Dobbinmeyer.
Hi, my name is Judy Dobbinmeyer, and my address is 4490 Lakeshore Court in Genoa Township. I'm here tonight to ask you to reconsider your decision to reject the $1.5 million from the state of Michigan for vaccinations and clinics and contact tracing and so forth. Many of your decisions recently have been silly, but this one is downright dangerous to your constituents. We are in the middle of a pandemic that has so far killed 200 Livingston County residents, including three in the last three days. More will die needlessly and more will suffer needlessly because of your decision. Just a few months ago, you were complaining that Livingston County wasn't getting its fair share of vaccines, and now you are turning them down and trying to make it harder for people to stay safe. It looks like you stoke whatever political fires are burning at the moment. The suggestion that one of you made, that if people want a vaccine, they can just go to the Health Department during regular business hours and, and get it, was, it was callous and it was reckless. The Health Department made an effort to take vaccines to the homebound in the spring, and now, if vaccine boosters are needed, you are telling these homebound people, you're on your own. Figure out how to get to the Health Department. You're telling working people who work during regular business hours, take time off from work, figure out a way to get that booster or the, the first and second shots that you need, because we're only open nine to five. We're, we're banker's hours. And the rest of you, if you work those ti, those times, too bad. Maybe some of this work will be done anyway. Maybe they'll figure out a way to still have vaccine clinics, but it will be done at the expense of other important work of the Health Department, including gathering data on who's getting sick and where. So I hope you will reconsider, find a way to reconsider that decision. I also want to speak against the appointment of William Boland to the Metro Parks Board. Boland is the doctor of death behind the anti-mask, anti-vaccine mobs that have been terrorizing our school board meetings the entire summer. He is spreading lies about COVID and preventative measures against the virus. He does not belong on any public body. He will embarrass us in front of all of Southeast Michigan. Please do not appoint him to the Metro Parks Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbinmeyer. Cindy, I shouldn't know how to pronounce your last name. I'll say Cindy M.
Hi, it's Cindy McNevich. I'm at 3140 Sheehan Road, Pinckney, Michigan, and I'm a Hamburg Township trustee. According to a Michigan State University study, Michigan's County Board of Commissioners are elected to oversee a complex local unit of government. They have three key roles, one of which is providing constituent services, and a portion of that is helping residents obtain services of a county agency. The Livingston County Health Department is indeed one of these county agencies, and they have tirelessly provided services to mitigate COVID over the last year and a half. And I value the job that they have done. The one and a half million dollars would help them provide services going forward into the next fiscal year to the residents that want them. Current funding ends September 30th, and we all know that COVID is not ending by then. Some of the school districts in the county have started last week, and already three days into the school year, we have had numerous classes having to quarantine. Some of the Health Department's jobs are to conduct testing, contact tracing, and case investigations. They struggle to provide basic services, let alone the many extra hours of manpower to handle a pandemic. They need this money. The county needs this money. My ask of you today is for one of you to bring forward a motion to amend today's agenda to include a revote on the resolution to accept Michigan Department Health of Human Services funding to support Livingston County's Health Department's 2022 COVID-19 response. And on another note, I ask the board to vote to approve the appointment of Steve Williams to the Metro Parks Board of Commissioners. He clearly has the experiences and is better qualified to repose on our community on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNevich. Next, Susan Cobb.
Hi, I'm Susan Cobb, 2323 Bullard Road in Heartland. Last week, the words "agent of tyranny" were used to describe what our county board will become by voting to support monies going to our County Health Department. Then our Board of Commissioners Finance Committee somehow believed that was said and actually voted to not accept the money. Apparently, Commissioners Nakagiri, Drick, Smith, and Plank, plus the Speaker who needed proof that COVID actually exists, have not had family or friends affected by COVID, while I have. It's not fun having a loved one sick with this insidious disease, then have issues afterward, including hospitalization due to no peripheral vision. It's not fun having a friend's child die years earlier than his normal lifestyle would have allowed, but his ventilator wasn't enough to keep him alive. These are all true stories. It's not fun watching a young friend in his 40s with a new baby be consumed by COVID. He eventually had mini-strokes, blood clots, sepsis infections, a tracheostomy, a temporary pacemaker, and had his right leg amputated. COVID is real. In his statement before the vote, Mr. Nakagiri said, "If we turn this money down, am I preventing someone from getting a vaccine? I'm concluding no. That is my conclusion, and from that standpoint, I'm going to vote against taking the money." That's your conclusion? With what evidence? Do you know what wraparound services are? Have you done your due diligence? Or are you relying on what the Speaker spouted? Just because something is said over and over by a group of people, it doesn't make it a fact. Even beginning debate students know they need facts to back their conclusion. Perhaps our numbers are down in Livingston County because our Health Department has been able to properly do their job in keeping us safe. Your conclusion and that of your other three no votes will hamper and limit our County Health Department from using it for all the purposes they need. Please stop the short-sightedness by making this the political statement we all know it is. My health and the health of my children and grandchildren are not yours to do with as you please. We are living with a worldwide pandemic. It is reality, and you don't need to make it any harder for the rest of us. And today Pfizer got the okay from the FDA, and if that isn't enough to do a revote, then nothing is. I'm done.
Thank you for joining us. Next up, Crystal Zurich.
Hi, my name is Crystal Zurich. I live at 5067 Mason Road in Marion Township. I am a school board member in Howell, and I'm here to ask you to please do a revote on the money for the COVID, for, sorry, for the money to help with COVID for the Livingston County Health Department. I think it could be really helpful for our contact tracing and testing going on in schools right now to help keep our students healthy, to help keep our staff healthy, so that we can continue to do the work to keep our kids in school. And I just really hope that you will consider having a revote on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Suarez Forward is waving at us.
Jane Suarez Forward, Brighton Township, Livingston County. I, when I read that article out of WHMI, I was very disappointed that the, the COVID relief money from the state was turned down. I think that you have to think about all the very, the unknown variables that could take place over the next year. I mean, this, this, this COVID could mutate into something different that we, we don't know what it is. And to handicap the Health Department like this after Diane McCormick and her staff have worked their tails off, getting, I mean, they have to go out into the community and look for people who are homebound, people that are at home on oxygen. I remember my grandmother, she lived to 98, couldn't, she didn't leave her home for, for years. I mean, they have to search, they have to go help these people. It's not just simple, the simplistic view of go to the, the Health Department and get your COVID vaccine. That's, that's a bit of a simplistic view. And what's going to happen is these people are going, going to say, you know what? They don't want to fund us. I'll go work for a different organization. So then we're going to have a staffing problem. I know how this works. So I was very disappointed. I, I was, I hadn't had a chance to review how this meeting was going to go, whether you were going to, one of the commissioners was going to reboot the agenda tonight. But I hope one of you will try to amend this agenda and have a revote tonight so that we had, I see we have a full board here tonight, but I really think that this is short-sighted and that, you know, you, like, like that first gentleman said, you wouldn't handicap the Police Department. I don't think you should do that to the, the Health Department. We don't know what's on the horizon. We don't know what's going to happen over the next year. You need to have, you know, you need to take this money. I would take it if I was voting on behalf of all the people, all the seniors, all the children, that we don't know how this is going to affect them. And I did, I did, one thing I did do is look over all the school districts and the COVID cases that have already, Howell Public, I, I looked at that one. You have some cases there already, and what have they been in school, three days, four days? So I did look at, at that. So I would recommend that you revote this and that you send that money to us, and one and a half million, yeah, I'd like that money. And, you know, I'm an advocate of getting our fair share, and I would, I would like to see that. And that's all I want to say, but I do agree with, there's very little I disagree with, with, that everybody said so far. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice Foster.
Hi, my name is Janice Karlovich Foster. My address is 8734 Bonaventure Drive, and I'm in Green Oak Township, which is District Eight. And I'm just here to ask you to please reverse your decision to reject the COVID relief funding that our Health Department really needs that money, and we are in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, and our numbers in Livingston County are going up every day. There's more and more, and the schools opening. Some of them, we don't know whether they're going to be wearing masks or not. It's still an open question in some districts. I just feel that this is not the time to be defunding our Health Department. They need more support from you, not less. I appreciate the four of you that did support accepting the funding from the state and hope that you would consider revoting on this issue, because to leave it as a 4-4 tie is not, it's not acceptable at all. This is taxpayer money that we need going into the fall. Things are most likely going to get worse, and we do need that support. I'm also here to support Steve Williams for the Metro Park Board. I hope you will reconsider him as to serve on that board and representing our county. I do not support William Boland at all in that post. We need people who are going to bring people together and not drive our community apart. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anna Panala.
Hello, Commissioners. I just wanted to call and voice my support for Mr. William Boland for the Metro Parks Board. I think he would be a fantastic representative for Livingston County. Back to the COVID funding, I could not have been more proud with the way the Commissioners handled the additional funding. The idea that we can now just revote because you didn't get the result that you wanted the first time is obnoxious. There was a vote. There may not have been an entire board present, but the vote took place. There was, I can't remember who it was that actually brought up during the meeting that suggested that you wait for a full board. That was, that was not accepted. That was not an idea that the board accepted, so they went forward with the vote. The vote is now, the vote is now what the vote is. It died in committee. I don't believe that it's smart to continually revamp every single decision that this, this board makes. I hope that people are aware who are pursuing the idea to revote for, for this COVID funding that this is already earmarked for exactly what it's intended for. There's no defunding of our Livingston County Health Department. This is additional funding that's already earmarked by the federal government, essentially through the state government to, on an agenda. And thankfully, our Livingston County Commissioners denied that agenda. So I just wanted to support the idea that you continue to stick with the vote that was taken, and we do not think about revoting. COVID in our county is not an issue. I looked on the Michigan Gov website today. We have two probable cases, not even cases in our county. So it's, it's not an issue here. We have almost 200,000 people in our county. Over 17 months, 186 people in our county died with COVID-19. There's no way to know for sure that they died. There's no way to know for sure that they died strictly of COVID-19. So that's, that's not even like a percent. So let's be reasonable people. Let's leave the federal government out of our, our great county here in Livingston and, and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Panalov, could you provide your address for the record?
Uh, yeah, uh, my address is, um, 11603 Eagle Way in Brighton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up, uh, Chuck Wright. If you'd give us your name and address before starting, uh, that'd be great.
Hi, this is Chuck Wright, 5575 Stowe in Fallerville. Uh, tonight you're going to vote on, uh, here on Clinton Metro Park member. Uh, at least one of the people you'll be voting on is Steve Williams. Uh, I don't believe that Steve is a good fit for Livingston County to represent, uh, us here on Clinton Metro Park Board. Uh, he spent $6 million trying to, uh, buy his guilt, white guilt. And, uh, when caught on that, was, uh, asked about it and then determined that this, people in Livingston County didn't deserve any, um, representation because of a member of, uh, our community, Robert Miles, who's, uh, passed away actually 30 years ago. He won caught on that, would then come back and complain that, uh, he decided he would need to, um, take legal action against the county if he wasn't, uh, elected to the here on Clinton Metro Park Board. I think that even the process of coming up with, uh, member or the, um, the process to come up through the Personnel Committee is even flawed. So for these reasons, I would like to make sure that no one votes for Steve Williams this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see Nicole. Nicole, if you give us your full name and address before starting, you'll have three minutes. We lose Nicole?
I'm here. Hi, my name is Nicole Colors. My address is 8930 Century Drive in Brighton. Um, I would also like to support what Anna Panala has stated. Um, COVID-19 has not been a huge factor for our students. She did all the testing for the sports teams, and she's an expert. There were not cases of COVID, not many. It was not a factor. We need to be realistic about COVID-19. And this money, this $1.5 million, is to be used specifically in certain ways. And $917,000 is allocated towards our children. That is not okay. Um, thank you to the commissioners who voted no. I hope that the commissioners who voted yes reconsider their decision if a vote comes up. Realistically, vaccines are readily available everywhere in the county. You can go to Meyer, Walmart, Kroger, CVS, and Walgreens, and they have them readily available. Anybody who's wanted the vaccine has had a chance to get one or two, and now they're working on boosters. This money just has too many nefarious strings attached to it. We don't need that. Our, our county is better than this. I'd also like to share my support for Bill Bolin, and I hope that you consider him for, um, the Metro Parks Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Linda's iPad. Um, Linda, if you give your full name and address before starting, you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Linda Smith. My address is 12271 Cambridge Boulevard in South Lyon 48178. Um, I'm a retired registered nurse from the University of Michigan. So I, uh, I want this pandemic to be over as quickly as possible. And $1.5 million for City of Detroit may not be much, but that's a lot to help in Livingston County. I don't care if we only have one case or no cases. You know, helping with contact tracing when needed, helping with, um, vaccines, even though people think they have enough. This is money that we paid in. There's no strings attached to this. You guys are making it partisan. This is public health. We need to be, we are better than this, and we need to get everyone that will possibly take the vaccine, encourage them to take it. You can't make people take it. You know, I'm not advocating that. Yes, I think it should be mandated, but you can't make them take it. Take responsibility and use this money. People, use this money and put it toward COVID necessities, like, like the three items on the, on the chart are. I don't remember what they are now. But you know, to say that COVID is not a problem in Livingston County. I live in Livingston County. I know people who have had it. I know no one that has passed. I'm thankful, you know, very thankful for that. But I know people who have been hospitalized. But please, please, people, please vote to use this money. And, and don't let yourselves be bullied. If you think people are going to bully you to use this money in a way that you don't want it to be, you know, that you want strings put on it, there, there aren't. You know, what do, what do you think's going to happen? That Gretchen Whitmer's going to come down and zap you? Or that Joe Biden's going to come down and zap you? No, this is money that should be used to help the United States of America and Michigan and Oak, and Livingston County to rid us of this, um, terrible pandemic. Please, people, please, please, for the sake of, I'm 73 years old. I don't want people to get this, and I don't want to get it. I'm fully vaccinated. I was the liaison for the seventh floor to give flu vaccine at the University of Michigan. I know that these things help. I know that they do. Um, Francis Collins and, you know,
You have 15 seconds.
are from Michigan. Please reconsider. Please keep this money for, uh, Livingston County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Janine Iyer. If you give us your full name and address before starting, you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. Um, hi, my name is Janine Iyer, and I'm at 2396 Brighton Road and, and, um, actually in Genoa Township. Um, I just, um, wanted to, uh, thank, um, thank, thank the members of the Finance Committee who voted to reject the code funds targeted at children. These funds were the push of the jab on a population who have a 99.995% survival rate. These shots are still only for emergency use. So if you would have accepted these funds, you would have been pushing an experiment on to children, and that's against the Nuremberg Code. Um, the vaccine's efficacy and safety are not established. And, uh, data does show on the VAERS website that there are more deaths due to vaccines in the last year than, um, total all deaths of all vaccines for the past 30 years. So I, I really appreciate the caution that the commissioners that voted against or rejected these monies. I, I appreciate the caution that they, that they showed, um, by voting, uh, to reject the funds. Uh, you are protecting children by maintaining your rejection of the COVID funds. And, um, as far as the, um, quote, "need for contact tracing and testing", look, um, you know, we have gone through, you know, humanity has gone through many viruses and, and infections, and, you know, um, adults have been able to manage their health. We don't need government oversight on, um, you know, maintaining your own personal health. That's, that should be our decision. That should be our management. We're adults. We can do that. Um, and then I just want to encourage you, uh, to not be deterred by the fake local news and, uh, dangerous, I mean, fear mongers about COVID because, like someone was saying, the COVID deaths are, are not, um, there to be, you know, worried about COVID. And I just, um, like I said, I really want to thank those who voted to reject these funds, and I commend you for your, um, for your actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iyer. Um, I don't see anymore. I'm going to scan through the, um, no, I, I don't see any more, uh, hands raised in the Zoom crowd, so. Uh, certainly, if you would step up to the table, uh, provide your full name and address, you'll have three minutes. And if you would speak into the microphone so others, um, can hear.
My name is Monica Halama, and I live at 4414 Lilly Drive in Howell, Michigan. And we talk about all these people that, um, are so susceptible to COVID and about these deaths, and, and we're so scared about death and about dying. I have a niece. I have a niece that was born with cerebral palsy, and she has scoliosis. And she was born without eyes, and she's blind. And she's 40 years old. Nobody thought that she would live to be 40 years old. When she was born, the doctor didn't think she would live to be a year old. This year, she contracted COVID. She had no symptoms, no symptoms. Her parents had COVID. They thought she, they had a cold. They thought they had a common cold. They tested her, and she had COVID. She had no symptoms. Within a week, she recovered. You know what? Nobody knows what's going to happen to them in their lives. People are so freaking worried that they have to have this vaccine, and they have to, uh, have like all the government telling them what to do. For God's sakes, people, live your lives and quit being so afraid of every damn thing. You're probably going to die of cancer. You know, don't take the money if we have to wear masks for the rest of our lives. What kind of lives are we living? What kind of lives are we living, for God's sakes? You know what? This, this woman lived. She's 40 years old in a wheelchair and had COVID and survived. For God's sakes, let's live our lives. Let's not COVID destroy our lives before we die. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, yes, we have another, um, go ahead. Come on up, uh, give your name, full name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Townsend, and I live in Tyrone Township. I just want to say I don't envy any of you, uh, in the face of this controversy. And I do applaud the Finance Committee for, um, hearing us and taking a, a vote. And, um, I hope you don't accept a revote, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Um, oh, yes. Then I see somebody else on Zoom has a hand raised.
So I wasn't going to chat with you guys today.
If you give us your full name and address.
My name is Sherry LaRue, and I'm from Green Oak Township. Um, I want to give you my bias first so that you understand where my comments come from. I am a Bible-believing, constitutional-defending mom and grandma. My baby's 32 years old. And I fought the schools back then for undermining my parental authority. I was the mom. You weren't going to tell me what I could pack in my student's lunch and what I couldn't. And now here we are with parental authority under attack and health departments and schools ignoring parents, taking children captive, and saying, "Now, instead of reading, writing, and arithmetic, we're going to be in charge of your child's health." And what a sad state of affairs if we have homebound citizens that don't have family or neighbors to look in on them, to take care of them. What has this world come to? My mom just passed away in December. She had battled stage IV lung cancer for a year. Imagine my anger when upon passing away because the immunosuppressant drugs didn't work anymore, but her death certificate states COVID. She got that when she went in the hospital because her immunosuppressants weren't working. She didn't die of COVID. So any numbers anybody throws at me about COVID deaths or the number of people infected, I don't believe it. I don't believe it. I've lived it. I've walked through it. I don't believe it. I'm also here to say that I find government overreach into people's personal lives to be intrusive. Y'all swore oaths to uphold the US Constitution, the state constitution. I want to remind you that those are limiting documents. Those documents limit the power of government over individuals' lives, and we need to get back to living. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I see two people with their hands raised on Zoom. We'll start with Jennifer Smith. If you'd give us your full name and address, um, before you start, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. This is Jennifer. My address is 5105 Hollywood Court in Brighton. Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you for the vote the other day to say no to these funds. And the reason that I am applauding the board for coming to this, this vote is because I realize that you listened to your constituents on that call. To everyone coming on the call tonight, asking you to revote, how completely absurd. We didn't get a redo on November 4th. We shouldn't get a redo on a vote from a county commissioner meeting. If you felt so inclined that this bothered you that much, you should have showed up that day to the call to public. So I do think that it is completely ridiculous and it is wrong for you to even consider a revote. I want to remind those of you that were there when you voted, you commissioners. I want to remind you of all of the calls of the parents begging you not to take the funds because we don't need you overreaching to our children. That is our problem. Not one person that called in that day, I guarantee, would be sitting here on this call right now telling you, "Oh, yes, in the case of public health, please deny the funds." No, it has nothing to do with public funds and public health. It has every single thing to do with government overreach on our children. So I applaud your decision. I applaud your vote. Even those of you that didn't want to vote that way, you listened to your constituents. And let me just tell you, any backlash or whining and crying publicly out there on social media, it is overwrought because you're being applauded in all the correct circles out there. All of the parents heard you, and what you said to us was that you cared and you listened. And I just ask you to continue to do that. One other statement I'd like to make. In regards to Ms. Dobbinmeyer thinking that Mr. Bill Bolin is a terrible selection for the Metro Parks Committee, I just want to say that I couldn't disagree more. And her statements of radicalism against him should speak volumes to you as to why we need both sides of the table on all committees. Thank you very much for your support. Thank you for listening to the parents, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Um, Zachary Zurich. Uh, if you give your full name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, Zach Zurich, 5067 Mason Road, Howell, Michigan. Um, I'll be very brief. I think it's absolutely I think it's absolutely unconscionable that this board would turn down the COVID relief funding. I couldn't agree with Ms. Dobbinmeyer more. This is nothing more than a trumped up pandering to this wacky sect of our society for the life of me. I cannot figure out why. Refuses to listen to science, refuses to listen to fact, and, and just follows idiots like you into the dark. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anymore. Oh. iPad three, I, sorry. If you, once you're unmuted, if you give us your full name and address, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Lori McDougall. I live at 9738 Viking Lane in Green Oak Township. I have to agree with the gentleman who was just on. I think it's unconscionable that you would turn down federal funding that can help protect the residents of our county. I know that a lot of people in Livingston County don't believe that this is real and it's a problem. But all I know is I do watch the, the news. I watch the science. And when hundreds and thousands of Americans have died from this and many more are in hospitals as we speak, fighting for their lives, I think this virus has to be taken seriously. Even if we don't have a problem right now, it doesn't mean we can't have a problem in the future. And having the ability to have funding for contract tracing, providing vaccines as warranted and needed and wanted, we need to have that support system. It may come, you know, a time where you don't need the money, you can return it. But to turn it down and to make decisions for everybody in the county like this, I, I just find it unconscionable. And I think something as serious as this, you should have a full quorum for a vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom. I don't see anybody raised, hands raised here in the room. So I am going to go ahead and close the call to the public and remind people that there is another call to public later in the, in the meeting. Item number eight on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. One dated August 9th, 2021, the other dated August 18th, 2021. Looking for a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Motion to approve Gross's support.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Smith. Did I? All those in favor of, well, any corrections or additions to the minutes? All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine on the agenda are table items from previous meetings. We have no table items, so we'll move on to item 10 on the agenda, which is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda that's presented?
So move Helsman. Second, Dr.
Motion by Commissioner Helsman, support by Commissioner Drick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, item number 11 is reports. This is the opportunity for our, any of my colleagues to report on anything that they think is interesting to the entire board. Are there any reports tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to close reports and move on to item number 12, which is approval of consent agenda items. We have five resolutions on the consent agenda, resolutions 2021-08-135 through 2021-08-139. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve Griffith.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by, was that Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Any discussion? For consent agenda, we need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Griffith? Yes. Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Reader?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Helsman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up is the only resolution, item number 13. It's the only resolution for consideration tonight. It's resolution 2021-08-140. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Huron Clinton Metro, Metropolitan Authority. Is there a motion?
I don't know what's form of the motion you're looking for.
Just to start the discussion here.
Okay, move that we start the discussion to approve the appointment for the Huron Clinton Metro Park Authority.
Second, Reader.
Motion by Commissioner Helsman, support by Commissioner Reader. So I, I'm going to kick off the discussion. You know, there, we have a resolution in front of us. There is no name placed in there. You know, two, two persons have been nominated, the incumbent Steve Williams and William Bolan. The, the way the vote will occur is it'll be, you'll, each commissioner will vote for one or the other. And any, we should have somebody that gets five votes. And whoever gets five votes is appointed to the Metro Parks. It's the same process that we used when we filled the vacancy created when Commissioner Lawrence had resigned. So, you know, I would like to offer the opportunity, you know, for the candidates to, you know, speak about their credentials. I would limit it to five minutes. And then after their presentations, we will have the vote. Any questions?
I don't see Steve Williams. Was he invited to make comments?
The, I, I don't know.
So I would. Was, was Mr. Bolan advised that he might have time to speak?
The, I did mention to Mr. Bolan that there could be time to speak on the agenda. The rules, the, the policy that was established allows the, you know, candidates to have five minutes apiece.
Okay, if, it, it just seems that for equalness sake, whatever, whatever our rules say is fine. But if one was given a heads up and the other one wasn't, it seems like there's there, it's, it's not exactly even, that's all.
The, the rules, the policy allows for that. I, I, as the nominee that I put forward, I, I mentioned it to Mr. Bolan. I made the assumption that those in support of Steve Williams, you know, wouldn't mention it to Steve. It's, I guess, unfortunate that that didn't happen. I, I, I don't think that should, in my view, penalize Mr. Bolan for, you know, or deny Mr. Bolan the opportunity to address the, the board. Any further discussion? Mr. Bolan, you have five minutes if you wish to address the board.
I'm Dr. Bill Bolan. I am a conservative, and I hold conservative economic values that align with the sentiments of the majority of Livingston County. Although that may not be in alignment with all of Michigan, I do know it aligns with our county. I'm pro-life. I've organized rallies and petition drives. I'm an advocate for liberty. And in that instance, with the reference that was made online, I kept our church floodgate open during COVID. We are not anti-vax. We are not anti-mask. We allow people to choose to mask or choose to vaccinate if that is their will. That is our position. I diplomatically stood up against WHMI, often critics of your positions from the very beginning and other left wing critics throughout the time in which we stayed open. I'm an advocate for a unified committee and community. I oppose radical device of programs. I will stand for Livingston values, even if it means I am the only lone caster of a vote. This includes standing in opposition to opportunity based employment using gender, race, or personal identification as means of qualification for employment. I believe the most qualified is always the best qualified for any position at Metro Parks. Once I'm appointed to the Metro Park Board, you, the Livingston County Board of Commissioners, will learn that you can trust your Metro Parks appointee to vote in a manner that reflects the values of this commission and this county. In my opinion, it's important that you, as the Livingston County Board of Commissioners, understand that your selection of someone who shares your values and has the fortitude to stand up and make the right vote is important. That's me. During my interview, I answered a question from the perspective of a pastor, indicating that it could be possible for me to resign over ethical issues. I have rethought that. That was a wrong perspective. As a public servant, I realize standing even when alone is the correct posture, and I will fight for what my convictions are. I possess a track record of community service. I am an experienced drug counselor. I'm experienced as a director of a drug rehabilitation center. I'm experienced in prison ministry. There was a group that I was involved in that had an 87% impact on recidivism, where we would match people in the prisons with someone from the community to simply give them a point of connection. My educational level as a, someone who holds a doctorate should help to build bridges among similarly educated board members at Metro Park. I've experienced it will help me to hit the ground running as a Metro Park Board member. I've served on many boards with million and multimillion dollar budgets. I'm rated qualified by the County Administrative Committee. I understand board dynamics and how to work with others who may not share my values. I've already prepared as I researched the board, reading numerous meeting minutes and looking at the financial statements and reading the other member biographies. I understand the importance of parks as I grew up as an impoverished child who frequently used public parks and their services. So they, they were our only means of getting green built areas in Los Angeles where I grew up. I'm very familiar with Metro Parks as a frequent park attendee and golfer. I'm concerned that Metro Park spent $6 million on a private entity trust to support social justice. I think that was an egregious error on our part, not representing the values of our county. And I think that that should never happen. As a matter of fact, I think they should have used that $6 million to go toward the underfunded pension debt. That would have been wise use of the money. This hopefully will never happen again, and I would be diametrically opposed to such actions as it would be in opposition to Livingston County fiscal conservatism. I have a vision for Metro Parks. I believe in having a solid fiscal footing, good stewardship of taxpayer dollars, expanding underprivileged outreach with programming for those who are underprivileged, having been the recipient of such programming when I was a child. I believe in expanding underprivileged outreach with, in areas such as expand African American swimming programs, the expansion of Juneteenth celebration, expanding opportunities for physical, emotional, and mentally challenged children and people in the Metro Parks, Parks, expanded outreach.
15 seconds.
Privilege, looking for opportunities, provide a hands up to, for those in poverty, and looking forward to using my life experience to bridge gaps between conservative rural Michigan and liberal Detroit. I will advocate for your positions. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes.
It's highly inappropriate that we go forward with anything until we have confirmed whether or not Mr. Williams was given notice to be here.
The, as I stated earlier, the policy allows the chair to provide the speakers, the, the candidates, time to speak. It's unfortunate that those that were supportive of Mr. Williams did not convey that to him. I, I, it is a little bit awkward, but I, I am not inclined to put off the vote. We, we have been without a appointee for weeks and months. And I think the citizens of the county deserve a, deserve a representative and a vote.
Mr. Chair. I have other things I need to say, but I'd like to say. But it, it seems to me that the people who organize this meeting should organize it. It seems to me this was not organized. You know, if and I don't, you know.
Would, would Commissioner Helsman, I know you are a strong supporter of Mr. Williams. Would you like five minutes to speak on his behalf?
Absolutely not. I think that that's not, that's not, you know, he is quite able to speak for himself. And it just, I, I, I just wish that, that whoever organized this meeting, whether it's you or, or, you know, somebody organized the, the presentation for Mrs. Henry, you know, for Carolyn Henry. And it, 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 it just doesn't seem appropriate, that's all.
Commissioner?
And, and, and I've tried to keep my hand off this, you know, so. And when it, it just doesn't appear right, that's all.
Commissioner Zajak?
Mr. Chair, hearing my colleagues' concerns, I'd make a motion for recess if one of them feels so inclined to reach out to Mr. Williams to give him an opportunity to address the board. It's a motion for recess.
Is there support for?
I should, sorry. Motion for recess for five minutes.
Is there a support for a five minute recess? Support. Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Plank for a five minute recess. All those in favor of taking a five minute recess, so can reach out and try to connect with Mr. Williams. Signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? We're in recess till before five minutes on my computer. That'll be 6:43.
I would, I would ask the chair to make that phone call, please. For the, for the, this is for the board. The board is, is wanting him to come. But it seems to me that, you know, the invitation from one, you know.
I'd be happy to call him.
Sure. Right, but I just asking you to do that.
We're in, we're in recess for five minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate that.